Good evening. The work session of the Oseo School Board is being conducted in the forum of the Education Service Center, 11293rd Avenue North in Maple Grove. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session has ended. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their names starting to my left.
Jackie Moscata-Jones, a school board member.
Thomas Brooks, school board member.
Kaye Balla, Executive Director of Community Relations.
Sarah Mitchell, school board member.
John Morstad, Executive Director of Finance and Operations.
Steve Flesk, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools.
Sunny Burskin, Director of Student Services.
Casey Wilkie, Guest from Cary.
Rob Richardson, Guest from Cary.
Ryan Bass, Assistant Superintendent for Community Engagement.
Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Kelly Parpart, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools.
Heather Duckworth, school board member.
Anthony Paternas, Executive Director of Technology.
Ryan Severson Hall, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
Tamara Grady, She/Her/Her, school board member.
Amy Moore, General Counsel.
And Kim Heil, Superintendent.
Nai Tanya Simon, School Board Member and Present. The purpose of the school board work sessions is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. I'll now ask that Dr. Howell for her check-in for this work session.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone, board members as well as district staff. I will do a shameless plug for Community Engagement and Education because they're everywhere. There is a 5K run on October 7th at the Alfred Park Reserve. You can run or walk, correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Ryan?
You can walk?
All right. So if you want more information, district27nowfoundation.org, and it helps support our media centers. Okay. All right, so welcome, everyone. So we're going to start our conversation this evening with a presentation. And we'll have a first presentation from Cary this morning. And Cary stands for Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement. So this evening, Dr. Bass will introduce our presenters. Dr. Bass?
Thank you. Good evening. Chamoscada-Jones, Vice Chair, Simon, members of the board, Assistant Superintendent Heil. Tonight, we have representatives from Cary, Dr. Rob Richardson, and Dr. Bass, Casey Wilkie, who just introduced themselves already. As you may recall, to provide a little bit of context, in May of 2022, right, we had a presentation from the DM group, which conducted Phase 1 of our special education review, our programming review. And at that time, the feedback from our stakeholders was that we didn't have enough information that was valuable enough to help us really inform how to prioritize and address some of the things that we were hearing from our teachers as reported through our EMO and our union group. So at that time, we decided to approach Cary. Superintendent McIntyre, at that time, met with Kim Givens and designed with their team this second phase study. So in addition to that request for second phase, we also included an evaluation of our health services offerings. So that will also be in the presentation this evening as well. So we'll have data, we'll have information presented tonight on the data collection, recommendations based on the findings, and next steps for developing an action plan. I want to also introduce our new Director of Student Services, Sunny Burskin. She'll be working closely with our union representatives from EMO, Cary, and key stakeholders across the district to develop an action plan informed by both of the reports that the EMO as well as the report received. So at this time, I'll hand it over to Dr. Casey Wilkie and Dr. Richardson. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Good to meet you all. So briefly, a bit more about who we are. So my background is in special education and school psychology. I'm a school psychologist and have a PhD in special education. Most of my work has been in schools. I've been at Cary for three years. I'm Associate Director there. And prior to that, I worked at University of Tennessee in the School Psychology Program.
So my background is I was a special education teacher. I taught 3K through grade A at students with special needs. And then I wanted to kind of learn more about the research side. So I went back to high school and I studied literacy for students with disabilities and database decision-making processes until I started working at Cary. And I'm a research associate. I've been there just nine months. I was actually hired to be the project manager on this evaluation.
So a little bit about Cary, the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement. We're one of two cross-disciplinary research units in the College of Education and Human Development at the University of Minnesota. The other one is the...
ICI.
ICI, so...
Institute on Community Integration.
Right, very good, thanks. So Cary has been around for about 30 years. And we sit in that space between research and practice and do a lot of work with the schools in Minnesota and also throughout the Midwest. So we have expertise in research, evaluation, literacy, and assessment. And our vision, our new vision statement that we came up with this last year is to become a premier hub for making research accessible and actionable. So more information is linked. I guess you have a printed version, so the link doesn't work very well. So today's goals are to go through, talk through the report, reflect on key findings and recommendations, and review some of the next steps. So lots of, I'm going to start really briefly with the DMG evaluation. The point of this is not so much that, but Cary's evaluation. So as with our evaluation, DMG found a lot of strengths in the Oseo School District. They identified high levels of collaboration between the Student Services Department and the other district departments, and indicated that staff appreciated their colleagues and feel that they're all committed to the work of helping students. And there's been a lot of effort that they saw and we saw put into developing students, the whole student, social, emotional, behavioral instruction that goes along with quality education. And the staff, DMG indicated that the staff felt support by special education building providers. So key recommendations from that DMG report were to codify interventions, intervention time, make that intervention time explicit district-wide through modification of the schedules. Second recommendation was to clarify and modify the roles and responsibilities amongst personnel, especially for special education teachers, and to approve communication district-wide and provide professional development, enhance professional development for special education teachers. So as was indicated, that there's a feeling that more information was needed for action, action planning with a Phase 2. And so more information was needed about support for students with disabilities in general education settings where special education students typically spend a majority of their time. And then, so the supportive part for students who have been identified with disabilities as well as the preventive aspect to prevent problems early so they don't develop into something that may require special education support. So more, another area was support within special education settings, evidence-based instruction, needed more information about what was happening with the interventions happening within those special education settings and the fidelity with which those interventions were being conducted. And then the third primary need was more information about database decision-making, in particular progress monitoring and decision rules to guide action within interventions.
So I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk about our theory of action and then our questions that we started with and then a result. So we, you know, as a school board, as the district, I think the obvious thing we're all trying to do is we want to increase student outcomes, both academically and socially-emotional outcomes. So we wanted to look at like how are the students doing, the student outcomes, but that's really driven by the educator actions. What educators do is go to drive your student outcomes. And the educator actions are really driven by the infrastructure and supports that are available for them throughout the district. So when we were thinking about our research questions, we broke it down into those three areas. And so our evaluation questions, we have under student outcomes. We looked at what are the academic behavior and social-emotional outcomes for students receiving and not receiving special education services? And then what opportunities are there to improve those social-emotional and behavioral outcomes for students with disabilities? Thinking about educator actions, we wanted to know more about the high-leverage practices that should be promoted in professional learning and coaching for educators, educators in general in special education, that will increase the probability of positive outcomes for students with IEPs? And what additional opportunities are there for Oseo School District special educators to work more efficiently just beyond not just the DMG recommendations, but with our recommendations so that they can engage with their students? And then we also looked at what is the support system for educators? So that's looking at what collaborative infrastructures are in place for communication in that goes between district admin, building admin, teachers, ESPs, and then parents and students, administrators and students. And then also what supports are needed or available to assist educators with the database decision-making? So there was also a health services evaluation. These were conducted separately under Cary. And the health services had five different evaluation questions. And they wanted to look at, so is the programming within the health services department consistent with research? How effective and efficient is the current special education health service model for staff? They wanted to look at the efficiency of the third-party building system. How satisfied are the providers within the health services? And are they able to provide the services that students need? And then what are the outcomes academically for students who have these health-related concerns? So we had two different ways of going about these evaluations. Just looking at kind of the student services, we had three different data sources. And so we're looking at group interviews. We conducted focus groups with small groups, up to 10 individuals. And so this would be teachers, ESPs, and then administration teams, both special education and general education teachers. We had surveys that went to all staff, family, and students with special needs who were in the grades 9 through 11. And then we also looked at exam data. So that is all your student achievement data, discipline data, behavior outcomes, IED data, special education guidelines, staffing, policies that are in place, and then just kind of documentation that's available for initiatives and practices. And within the health services, they started with the literature review. They used the health service assessment tool, was what they decided on after the literature review, to kind of indicate what practices fall in line with what are best practices as far as health services. And they did the data review, file review, and then surveys and interview to be able to indicate all the information in the report. So the findings and recommendations we'll go through. I'm going to start with the student services findings, and then we'll end with the health services findings. So as far as student outcomes, some things are something to celebrate in, is that the MTC scores are close to state averages. And I'll show you a graph on this in a minute. Well, this is good, right? We want to be close to state average. The state average in Minnesota for proficiency is just around 60% of students are proficient in reading and math, which isn't necessarily something to really celebrate. It's good to be close to that. It's good to work towards that. I think going about that is also something that everyone in the district would be okay with. So that does mean that 40% of students are not meeting those reading and math benchmarks. So if we go ahead and look at some of these graphs. So this is for math. And because of COVID, what we ended up looking at for three years of data would be 17, 18, 18, 19, and 21, 22. And so of course, we're going to see a drop after COVID. A really good thing I saw, almost grade leveled through math and reading throughout the district, is that the statewide average really plummeted after COVID and actually, Oseo just lifted a little bit. You know, you kind of made up that gap there between the statewide average and the district average. So there were some good practices in place during that time of COVID. But if we look at this math proficiency data, and this is broken down by different racial groups, we can see the dashline is your statewide average of how many students are proficient. And then we have our district is a little bit below that. But even like, the thing that really stands out here, of course, is the discrepancy between different racial groups. So we have the top line are white students, and they are proficient at a level, you know, around 70% or above. And then we have students on the bottom, Hispanic students and black students are only performing, you know, right around 40% of the group of students are proficient in math, which is, you know, one of the concerns we highlighted in the report. If we look at reading data, now this is separated by different groups. So we're looking at English language learners, students who are receiving free reduced lunch, students with disabilities, and then again, we have our district line and our state line. You know, a little bit below 60%, so that's to say that 45% of students are not meeting proficiency in reading. If we look at our subgroups of free reduced lunch, students with disabilities, English language learners, it's far below that 40, you know, 50 percentile that are 50% for the district. So we're seeing some large discrepancies there. We have FastBridge data, and we looked at the winter FastBridge data. So FastBridge is the screening system that's used throughout the district. And this was one of the strengths we also found in the report, that there is a screening system in place, that students are screened three times a year. There is a data system to look at, the data for students' outcomes. And teachers have also had training on that, which is like all really positive, going in the right direction as far as being able to make decisions on student data. If you look at this, anything that's in like the maroon or lighter red, are students who are showing that there's some risk or high risk of them, you know, being at risk for a math disability or a reading disability on the next one. And so again, we have students lingering around the 50% of them are in the at-risk categories for math. And if we look at reading, it's a pretty similar story. We're around the 50 percentile, again, 50% of the students are in the high-risk or some-risk range for reading. Some other outcomes, so we kind of talked about this discrepancy with academic achievement. There is also a large discrepancy between student groups with behavioral outcomes. And we'll look at a chart in just a minute. Something that we found was a strength was that there's already PBIS being used in the district. There's been training on it. Teachers have indicated they are using it. And there is some evidence-based curriculum for socially-emotional behavioral health that has been adopted and is being used in the district. So those are both strengths we found. The staff did indicate that although these things are in practice, they often feel like there needs to be some clear guidelines and consistent implementation. It really varies between schools, and they're not always sure how to deliver these things with the district. So although they're happy they have it, they would like it to be a bit more clear. This is table on the next slide, it's really small, but I suppose you can look at it up closer. So this is looking at ATS and OSS. And it's for one full school year, and it's looking at for all the ATS referrals, OSS referrals, if we break it down into different student groups, is it, you know, what does it tell us about the students who are receiving the strongest discipline? And again, we're seeing a large discrepancy here. So, you know, if you look at students who identify as black or black students, we have, that's making up 27% almost of the population of the school. However, they are making up 60% of the ATS referrals and OSS referrals. And then, you know, on the flip side, we can look at white students making up 38% of the student population, but only 10 and 16% of the ATS and OSS referrals. Over-identification is also seen within the American Indian area and with students with disabilities. So students who have IEPs are receiving more ATS and OSS referrals than what they're making up in the student population. So talking about the provider educator action, one strength that we definitely saw was we reviewed a bunch of IEPs, and they were well-written. We used group rates to kind of identify what areas they were doing very well in. And overall, the scores were high, all the way 3K through secondary. Evidence-based curriculum has been adopted throughout the district. Teachers have felt the science of reading curriculum that they've been using and have, you know, they felt positive about that. Staff indicated through both interviews and surveys that there is a need to improve some intensive instruction, the high-leverage practices. And then also, that was all staff, not just special education staff, but special education staff indicated they needed some help to really be able to implement IEPs to the public instead of just writing a really good IEP, they felt like they weren't on the same technical level. Staff also indicated that they, you know, there was some good professional development, but it often fell apart once it got to the classroom, and they felt like they needed some, you know, more coaching, people coming into the room and really helping to guide those practices. So if we see this table here, this is our IEP review, and this was the overall average of all of them that we looked at. And we looked at around 30, yeah, 30, it says. Anything in the green means that the district's doing very well. The teachers and ESPs writing these, IEPs are doing a good job at writing these. There is some concern, like there wasn't always a peer comparison. And then transition, there wasn't always a measurable goal. And later on, this concern about transition does come up later on with parents and students kind of feeling like they weren't necessarily in the know on much for transition services for students who were at that age to receive transition services. So here, this is kind of looking at the behavioral and academic instruction. So we asked staff, like, are you using evidence-based practices? Do you think that these interventions, both behavioral and academic, are, you know, are they efficient, are they good for you students? And interestingly, we've kind of broke it down by admin and coaches, by teachers, general teachers, and then students that were said. And you can see that overall, people feel like there are evidence-based practices. But then, there's not as much agreement that the behavioral instruction, academic instruction is strong for students both with IEPs or students with disabilities and students with own IEPs. So there's a need to increase those practices within a Tier 1 setting and all the way down to Tier 2, Tier 3, and Special Education setting. Interestingly, a lot of the time, admin and coaches had a little bit more favorable opinion. And there was, you know, a lot of positive professional development has been in place. So, you know, you could see like, we do have these practices, you know? But some staff feel like maybe they aren't able to implement those or they're just not able to provide those at this time. There's some quotes from staff, and we found that like sometimes the quotes from staff told us, you know, it was like a very insightful moment to hear what staff had to say. We were asked them to put in individual comments, both on the surveys or when we met with them in person. And there are some staffing in here, you know, there's high expectations, there's increase of case load sizes, and this first one's just talking about staff. We're now in, it's becoming hard for staff to be able to complete their jobs. And then also here, we are such a huge district, and it's easy to assume that staff have the knowledge, but staff kind of indicated on the survey that they need some more help when there is. So there needs to be some more consistency within the building and within the district to help make sure these academic and behavior interventions really land. And this last one is about, I would like to see us become a system of schools instead of individual sites. Together, I think there's more power, more drive in human resources. Everything could be moving forward. And that was a consistent thing we saw when we interviewed people that you kind of said like, this school's doing this, and this school's doing this, and we'd like it to be consistent. Some other findings with the provider educator support. So as I talked about, the FastBridge system is already in place. They've received, staff have received PD on it, and that's like, you know, a really good track to be on, to be using FastBridge and have a system in place. Staff requested more time for collaboration in actually having time to review the data. They said it's not consistently in place. There's not really a plan, or the plan sometimes falls apart because of lack of time or just the system structure that doesn't allow for. And staff also indicated that they would like some more guidelines and just clear directions for the intensive interventions. That's an area they really felt they needed. This next chart is just looking at, so we asked staff questions about like being able to collaborate, collaborate and then like being able to plan for interventions or like know the process of intervention. And so here, the colors are kind of flipped, but the red is those people who strongly agree or somewhat agree. And then the blue and yellow here are people who either somewhat disagree or strongly disagree. So you can see, you know, oftentimes, we have like between 25 to 35% of the staff. It's really like there's not really, you know, a good process for monitoring interventions or there's not clear and consistent communication and collaboration. Some of the quotes that we found to be very informative were, you know, interventions are not always delivered consistently, there's lack of structure, we can't regularly monitor our goals and objectives on the IEPs, and the Tier 1 problem. So we need to remember that students that are IEPs are general education students first, and we cannot rely on special education for everything the student needs. This next section is, so that all kind of focused on student services, and then the other findings are from health services. And so one of the first findings was that it was unclear for students with health services on their IEPs. So it was unclear which services were considered, medical services or that any transition services, if provided, would include health services. It was unclear to be able to decipher that on IEPs. And then all health services are not documented on IEPs 504 plans and health plans or emergency plans. And this becomes an issue for tracking student outcomes and for district billing compliance. Some other key findings from the health services. You know, overall, this app said that the professional personal care provided by the nurses is really acknowledged and appreciated throughout the district. Colleagues, parents, all agreed on that. Staff, especially special education teachers, ESPs, nurses, they're all feeling overworked, undervalued, burnt out. They feel like they don't have the resources necessary to complete their jobs. And then mandatory paperwork is a problem for the staff. Mostly nurses, this was, but also special education teachers, said they did not have the time to complete the mandatory paperwork. So with that, we're going to go on to our recommendations.
Okay. So key recommendations from these findings include some more emphasis on progress monitoring. You have good tools for progress monitoring. Adding in some more transparent decision rules that are well-communicated to special education staff and also general educators who are running interventions. So for example, those in pre, getting, receiving pre-referral support, pre-referral to special education, they would also benefit from more clearly set decision rules regarding progress monitoring. So things like intervention... So, things like intervention entry criteria, when to maintain an intervention, when to fade an intervention, when to exit an intervention. So, and then with interventions, increase the consistency and coherence across. There's lots of islands of excellence, lots of good things happening throughout the district, but making it more systematic and clear what interventions that the district is endorsing and supporting and probably carry them out. So, this would be true for, in special education as well as interventions being conducted in general education. Having those interventions play well together. Sometimes, it's easy in bigger districts to have silos, right? And you get one set of interventions for general education when students are, for example, having a difficulty reading and another set for after they're identified with a disability and there's some special ed services. And that can be confusing and disjointed. It's less effective and also creates a lot more effort on the part of staff and training and so on. So, getting that quote here. Teaming, having clear, clearly defined roles and responsibilities of special educators, general education, there should be overlap, right? Because we're one system. But clarity and getting all staff pulling in the same direction to help support all students would be beneficial for improving effectiveness of services, but also efficiency. There's lots, we heard repeatedly, a lot of stress and concern about burnout from teachers. They're working hard, they're doing the best they can. Finding ways for clarity and efficiency is going to really be important to help alleviate some of that. Along with that teaming, providing collaborative time to plan and collaborate, clarify and tighten up what's called an integrated systems framework. And what that means is, is supporting students' mental health through the PBIS, which you have, have going, Positive Behavior, Interventions and Supports, mental health, counseling, and supports your social-emotional learning instruction, and also the relationship building that you have going with IM4 and I think Character Strong is another one. So, integrating them so that they're easy and they're all, they are folded in together and not one thing, one thing, one thing piled up on top is, is important. IM4, I believe, does a really good job of integrating those things in the integrated system. Then, examine transition planning and prioritize steps to improve the systems. Bass talked about transition planning. A number of parents were not aware of the transitions written into the IEPs for students who are older, they're getting ready to graduate. That'll be a relatively easy thing to fix. Give that some attention to develop those transition plans. And in many cases, the transition plans were there, they just weren't well-communicated. So, health services, some similar sorts of themes. So, systematize and unify policies, procedures, and practices across buildings in the district. Be more systematic, communicating the systems that are in place. And also, that last one has to do with making decisions about staffing based not only in terms of numbers of students receiving health services, but also the demands on time. So, using that acuity data district-wide for planning and staffing. Okay, so, good news, I think, is the recommendations that we were, that we found from our study are things largely that are, that train has already left the station and Oseo is already working on. So, for example, the district is working through MDE with the Minnesota Department of Education to develop a process guide that helps coordinate and clarify that multi-layered instruction that students get so that teachers across special education and general education can be all singing from the same song sheet. And it's helpful for communicating with your professional development regarding what your MTSS system looks like and just provide support across students to make it all systematic. All right, so, so, with that, with that MTSS process guide, I would see that special education would play a really key role in the intervention side, the intensive interventions, and building that out and also working with general education so you have a seamless process of intensifying interventions, you know, as the student passes from general education to more intensive special education support. The next recommendation there is to revamp the schedule to support collaboration and direct service. So, make sure that this, we had lots of requests for this in the focus groups so that there's time to collaborate around the needs of all students, that universal tier, but also time to collaborate and run interventions at the more intensive tiers, tier-two and tier-three, for targeted students. Okay. Teaming, consistent decision-making procedures practiced by all students with using the screening data that you have through FastBridge. So, with that consistent decision-making, we're talking not about decisions regarding interventions for individuals, but also looking at the system as a whole and having in your building or school leadership teams a common format for agendas, what data you should be looking at and which season, problem-solving protocol, a set of procedures so that you can do a root cause analysis and find, and really target the root causes for the problems that you're seeing and then monitor progress over time. So, I think systematizing those teams would be helpful, both in terms of efficiency and effectiveness. And then the last one, ensure that the highest qualified and trained staff are supporting students with the greatest academic and behavior needs, with the right people in the right spots. Okay, and then through everything, through all of planning. I know Oseo has a commitment to equity. Build that commitment to racial equity into all the, all your, all the plans that you're carrying out. There's a quote here. "Schools are not supported equitably and it reflects systemic racism." For example, "I understand disproportionality on black. I care about overrepresentation of black kids in special education." So, when my team says a kid needs to be assessed for special education, we have, we've done the work. But often, our kids don't get the support that we know they need because we have an issue with disproportionality across the district. It sure seems like schools and parents on the other side of town, the west, get what they need because the board listens to them more. That might sting, but that's a theme that we got throughout our interviews, that some schools, some parts of town get better quality services and education. So, next steps. So, as indicated, Oseo is in the Minnesota Department of Ed cohorts working on developing multi-layered instruction and developing an MTSS handbook. And we will be working in collaboration. Bass is going to be attending those meetings and helping support Oseo through that. Carrie, Ms. Bierskin, and the special education leadership team collaborate on special education recommendations and next steps there. And would you like to say more about that at this point or?
On the social education, absolutely. So, in regards to, excuse me, to next steps, we'll be identifying a core team with membership from different levels, throughout different grade levels throughout the district, of both special educators and general educators and then our educational support professionals, coordinators as well, to review the data from the carrier report and then prioritize some of these recommendations and determine what it is we want to focus on first, create a timeline for that, and then move to our second priority as a group and then disseminate that information up to buildings in which we will create subcommittees, get their feedback, review, and then begin working on those priorities.
All right, so, if I, I tried to find a picture to kind of summarize these recommendations. There's a lot of recommendations, so we tried to cull them down.
That's my whole strategic plan, I think. Just saying.
Yeah, but it's continue across these areas to build capacity and consistency and coherence so that we're all growing in the same direction and so makes the work lighter for everyone. So, questions?
Thank you. So, board members and leadership, are there any questions?
Well, my questions are mostly for us, but I have one question about one thing that was wise, which was, this is actually us, our question too, actually. How many sped teachers do we have district-wide?
I could write that. It says let me record, I believe. Let me see.
Now she's looking. Do you want to move on to other questions?
Yeah, just a kind of a quick question reflecting on some of the interviews that you talked about. And there just being a common theme of racial equity and parts of the district not feeling heard at the, at the district level. And so, I guess I'm just wondering if there were any specific recommendations or feedback that came out of that versus just the common theme of not feeling heard?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. I don't recall offhand.
Building on that question, I guess, I'm curious to hear leadership's response to some of this, especially when it comes to comments and survey feedback about disproportionality of resources, because I know that's a specific criteria that leadership is always looking at, ensuring that there is the appropriate resources at all of the sites to meet the needs. So, I was curious about kind of the survey data perception versus the data analysis behind some of this. I guess I was expecting a bit more data versus survey feedback.
Yeah, so, we did find that, that, a, that different, different sources of data that our, our group interviews or focus groups reinforced what we were seeing in the surveys. And we saw themes across the, just the various sources of information that reinforced each other. I'm not sure I'm getting at your question or comment.
So, from my perspective, I thought this next phase of work was really going to be to understand root causes, to understand best practice models, to understand where we had gaps against that versus more survey information, which we already had, which is not, you know, your task was what your task was. So, I'm interested to kind of hear the reaction of leadership to the recommendations and insights based on where we've already been on this journey. If there's, if you're prepared to offer any insights. If not, that's okay, we can just take the information and think about it.
Yeah, I would say that the insights are largely around making expectations explicit, building the systems, and then making it clear what expectations are around teaming, around interventions, about assessment and progress monitoring. I think the question that you raised about root causes, so I think that what's kind of generated this, these series of evaluations in the first place is frustration about workload and feeling like people can't do an adequate job into the tasks that they were assigned because they had too, too much to do. And part of that is just a national problem right now with, you know, post-pandemic, a lot of emotional and mental health concerns that we haven't, as educators, had to deal with this volume or some of the severity of some of the behaviors and mental health problems. So, those kind of issues alone take a lot of mental bandwidth and emotional bandwidth. So, the, the key, I mean, that's going to be just difficult right now. But, but the key to addressing that is getting powerful interventions in place consistently across teachers, across schools, and supporting educators in their use. Not just sending them the memo, but finding ways to have job embedded professional learning. That improves effectiveness, which, which, which will lessen caseload, but also getting systems to coordinate and having general education and special education working more seamlessly together will tend to make the workload lighter. It is incredibly difficult and demoralizing to feel like you have to invent all this stuff yourself and that you're solely responsible yourself as a teacher or educator. But if you have the same, have teachers across the students' environment all talk, you know, pulling together, talking the same language, having the same expectations, you're going to be that much. to be that much better off and it's going to make it easier for everyone.
Can I just make some comments?
Yes.
I'm just going to be very forward. I'm extremely frustrated by this presentation. There is only one piece of new information in here, and that is about transitions. Everything else here, we have already learned and we have gone over. I'm concerned why we allocated funds to a study group to give us information that we already had. We've been talking about this for a really long time, and I feel like we've basically gone backwards versus continuing to move forward on this work that we have been saying needs to be done for so long. We're not making progress on it, and we're not helping our teachers or our students by continuing the cycle of surveys and presentations on information that we already know. And for me, that's extremely frustrating, and I would like to hear from our staff what your perspective is, because I feel like we're not going anywhere. And so I'd like to know if you feel like this has been a benefit to the work that we've already been doing, or if it's new information or not, because to me, it's all the same stuff we've heard time and time again.
I guess I would happen, just to add on to that, specifically again, going back to the racial equity recommendation. This district has made a commitment to racial equity, and it's been in place for a long time. So to me, that's not a recommendation.
I'm not talking about that.
No, I'm not talking about you. I'm saying this presentation, I mean, we saw a graph that showed the number of black students in special education compared to white students. But the only recommendation we have that speaks to that is just the district needs to make a commitment to racial equity. I would have loved to have seen a presentation directly related to that and targeted strategies to help black students instead of these broad recommendations that aren't going to address the immediate needs and the numbers that we see in this report. So I too am frustrated with this. We did get more information in the last presentation, so I mean, I guess that part was nice, but I too am frustrated with this.
If I can ask anybody who I'm not familiar with this, is there a history, a set of literature and evidence that really links the issues of racial disproportionality with special education? Is there an intersectionality between special needs students and issues with race so that we can just sort of back it out instead of the specific context of Oseo, just kind of get an overall understanding of how that, how those machinations work in our public education system?
There is some research in that area. I'm not an expert in that area. I think that there's been a history of inequity in special education regarding students of color. For example, the using IQ tests that were not normed or well-suited towards people of color.
In the history of over-education of students, that's. Well, I'll speak on that. In the report, there is like some more detailed information about that and over-identification, if that is seen within the district. The district-wide numbers are like pretty, like right where they should be for state averages, I guess, if we're looking at like different racial groups and identification in special education.
But our state averages aren't good, so we're not going to compare.
The state averages are not good.
Okay, just wanted to put that out.
Yes, yes, yes. But then we also did pull up, there were some areas such as like students who were identified as having emotional disorders, black students were over-identifying in that category, whereas they were not over-identified in like traumatic brain injuries or autism or things like that. So you can kind of pull apart that information and see whether there is some over-representation.
Thank you.
Well, just to hop on that, full disclosure, I'm a teacher. Everybody else knows that. One of the big pieces I got from this presentation, and I think we've been talking about for a while in our, in this district, is the importance of tier one. And how I think for a while, we were working so hard on trying to help the tier two and three that we forgot about how strong our tier one, correct me if I'm seeing this wrong, but I think in general in education, how strong our tier one has to be with those supports. Then we wouldn't be over-identifying black kids with emotional behavior, because I see it all the time. So I guess, I guess when I look at it, I look at it a little differently than maybe some of my colleagues, and I'm excited to see this task force, that's what I'm going to call your group, Sunny, this task force of really narrowing down what that looks like. We need more collaboration time. What does that look like? How can we get together as schools and work together? Where I work, we, we had a whole staff meeting on where all the teachers talked about our high flyers, we call them, right? The kids who seem to need the most interventions. And what is it that we can do collectively and collaboratively to make sure that their experience is the best experience for them and for all of us? That's easy to do in my tiny school district, in my tiny school, right? But we've got a huge system that we have to figure out, you know, how to do that. I guess that's where my perspective is lying at this exact moment.
I guess what I'm really struggling with is the recommendations. Most of these recommendations are things that we've already discussed as things we would like to do, and I think that was already alluded to, things that are already being implemented, so again, not new information. But also, some of these things are just not feasible, like ensuring the highest qualified training staff are supporting students with the greatest academic and behavioral needs. We can't be just moving teachers and students all around to make that happen because we've got contracts and we've got boundaries and we've got all kinds of different issues that would, you know, you can't just cherry pick. And that could also lead to disproportionately negative outcomes if we were to try to implement something like that. And.
Can I interrupt and?
Sure.
Speak to just that piece? Or is there more for that piece?
Not for that piece.
Okay. So the way, the way I see it right now, in many schools, the people dealing with the highest behavior are the people with the lowest amount of training, right? And I see this as an opportunity to say, hey, how can we change that? It's not like throwing the apple cart up and everybody gets moved around. It's how can we move to this where we have high-quality people? I look at my building and, you know, that position's turnover, 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 turnover. And they don't have the degree or the background or whatever when, you know, if a licensed person who has training in mental health and social emotional was there, there could be quicker interventions. It would be cheaper in the long run, is what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, but I also think that it's important to acknowledge that every staff person that we hire in these positions is a highly qualified individual with the training necessary to do this job. And it doesn't matter if they're new or they're tenured, but that's, to me, it's totally irrelevant. That does not determine whether or not they're qualified to do the work or exceptional at the work. So I don't want to.
That's not, yeah, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, and I've talked to a lot of ESPs when they get thrown in. In this district, we have the highest amount I've ever seen of experienced ESPs. So that's, you know, where a lot of us are coming from. I've seen in many places, including some of the schools in our district, where we have people coming in, doing the job, and they feel lost because they don't have the training to do what we're doing, is what I'm saying. That's why we lost people.
I'm not saying that those things aren't true. I think that we're thinking about two different paths on this. What I'm saying is that if we're ensuring that the highest qualified and trained staff are supporting students with the greatest academic and behavioral needs, that's insinuating that we're not already doing that, which we are.
Heather, to get back to your very first question about like how many special education teachers, that kind of relates to the recommendation. So instead of looking at the total number, we did kind of like a ratio. So if we look at like special teachers to special education students, the ratio, like we did it by school, it's between like 14 to 20, so you could have one teacher to 29 students at the very highest end, or one teacher to 14. If we add in special education teachers in ESPs, that ratio is between one and two and a half, like district-wide. So that means ESPs are really valuable, right? They're like really lowering that ratio. But then what we see in ESPs is they feel really depleted. They're like, man, we are doing so much work, we don't know how to do it, this is, we're really struggling. And so part of that recommendation comes from that, that ESPs often do have less education, not always, but less training. And so providing more specialized training for ESPs would be helpful since they are taking on a lot of that load. And then also, when we're talking about the systems and really integrating it from general ed to special ed, the special ed teachers in the ESPs really felt like they had to take on the full ownership for a lot of their students. You know, if their student was in a class, they'd get a call like, you need to come help them, and you know, stuff like that. And instead, if we, the system is broader, so like everybody's working in unison for all the students, then we do have some of the other staff that's not in special education that's highly trained taking some of that responsibility for the students' higher needs. So that was a little bit of where that recommendation came.
So I think at this point, unless you've got questions that are really going to be about clarifying, I think what I'm hearing is that it's, it's information that we look to take action on, we have been looking to take action on. I think it's really great to see and reinforce the need for standards across, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so one of the things I was most excited about this is from hearing from other special ed teachers about how overwhelmed they are and how that feels like a barrier to them providing the best support that they can for students. And ultimately, our goal is the best outcome for students, but also really thinking about retaining the best teachers that we can for these positions. And so what, what do you think that I could, well, there's two parts. What, what do you think comes out of this that's going to make teachers stay? It's going to make them feel better, it's going to make them feel more supported. And then also, sort of thinking about that, because one of your recommendations that I found really valuable is sort of moving from a site-by-site basis of management to more of a system-wide. And so what can we tell teachers, not just so that they feel better supported, but that our system and a systemic approach can reduce, what barriers can we reduce for them so that they can do their job better and have better outcomes?
Yeah, that's a great question. And we heard repeatedly in our focus groups a desire for more clarity and more, more support in developing the systems. So I think clarification, develop the things that we, there, you've got lots of great things in place throughout the district, it's just, it's a lot that's piled together. So it, I think that the easing of the burden is going to come from strategic braiding of these initiatives and just really clarifying, clarifying how all the educators can work together within the context of a system. How can we build the system that supports the work of the educators? So that's kind of a broad example, a broad response, but I think that that is where the district efforts are working to develop clarity, coherence, and mutual support.
So consistency. I have to tell you what we're going to do. Okay, so as a superintendent, one thing we've worked on in our district is the three Cs, that we're going to work towards coherence to ensure that we have consistency across the district and connection among our staff. So when you're talking systemic, that's what we're talking about. When we're looking at special education, that is a field that has had problem with due process for years. We're dealing with that. And on top of that, then we had COVID hit, that our mental health issues got even stronger, our need to find humans for the position wasn't there. So the stress on our staff was even more insane than you can ever imagine. We had our students coming in that had to learn to be together again, had to come in with mental issues, may have had parents that died of COVID, all kinds of various things, lost their homes or what it may be. So in our district, we are working on our three Cs of consistency, coherence, and connection. And what this is, it's a systemic problem, it's our three Cs. So board, we're going to address that. So just looking within the system, looking in, when are building connections, when do they have time to talk together, when do they have time to share together? Making sure we have the same plan across the system, making sure we're not putting too much weight on the system so that they're able to get their job done. And so the three Cs is what we're doing, different three Cs, is what we're going to be doing in the district anyway. But thank you, though.
I just would offer, having sat in the DM groups presentation to the board, and then as we were reviewing the slides and the report and the findings from this, there was a bit of, okay, what's different? Right, there was a bit of, okay. And I think it doubles down on the complexity of what we're trying to address. And there's a lot of systemic elements and components to this. And so when we sit down with our stakeholders that represent special ed and general ed teachers across the district that want to be a part of the solution work related to this, we're going to have people in the room who are passionate and have, right, a lot of perspective around getting this, how to do better. So, and we will use the information from these reports to help inform those conversations, but we're going to have, we're going to have representation in the room to speak to these pieces like firsthand. So it's not lost on us that you're frustrated, it's not lost. And we're going to take that feedback forward when we sit down with our staff to create action plan around this. So we'll bring that, that update back to you either through Super Junior House board update, or if you all want that here, we're happy to bring it forward, because we're going to get down as Dr. House, we're going to get into the systems work.
Thank you.
I did just want to shout out and thanks to, actually for something that Sunny said, that task force, including ESPs in that, particularly given the ratios that were just mentioned and how valuable they are, just in kind of lowering that interaction with students. One, I just want to thank you for including them, but two, I hope that they are well-represented on that task force, that their perspectives, you know, on this are clear and are clear in that we are actually targeting some of these supports for them in the way that they work as well, so.
Absolutely, because I see things that nobody else sees.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on. Thank you very much to our next agenda item. And as we all know, the one in a room this spring, we had quite a few legislative changes this year, quite a few mandates that were requested, so we're going to have our General Counselor Amy Moore, who's going to give an overall general overview of those legislative updates. Amy, thank you.
Well, I'll just start talking as that gets ready. So in the spring, the board heard an update about all the different legislative changes. This presentation is going to focus on what those legislative changes will mean to your policies. So I'm not going to go through each specific policy and what red lines will be. That will be for the Board Policy Committee in October, but I will point out going through the different sections of the board's policies and what will be targeted for updates based on those legislative changes. So I'll start with the 100s. So I'll start with the one hundreds. The first policy that will be impacted is Policy 102, the equal opportunity and prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and violence. The language that needs to be included in an update to this policy is a specific statutory policy that says we prohibit sadistic and malicious conduct. And that will apply to employees, that will apply to students, and that will apply to contractors. So as it relates to the employees and the contractors, this would be the best place and policy to put that language. Malicious and sadistic conduct means hostile learning environment by acting with the intent to cause harm, by intentionally injuring another without just cause or reason, or engaging in extreme or excessive cruelty, or delighting in cruelty. The conduct involves protected categories or sexual exploitation. Now, our policies already cover this, but the legislation says specifically you have to include this language. Our Policies 102, bullying policy, our policy about mandated reporting, already covers what this language means, but legislation does require us to include it. So that's why we will have to update Policy 102. Next. Delightfully, Series 200, 300, and 800 require no changes. So your Board of Directors, Administration, billing sites, no changes.
You're exhausted.
Your 400 series, personnel, so Policy 406, involving public and private data, no changes to your policy, but wanted to inform you that there will be a procedure update. I'll get to the directory information in the 500 series, because that applies to students. But for labor organizations, they now get to access information related to employees and their groups, to process grievances, for their bargaining, and to implement, you know, basically Public Employment Labor Relations Act. And so that's a change from a may to a must. Policy 435, qualification of personnel, this is, this is not a big change, but you're adding a provision to report layoffs and hires by race and ethnicity. The reason for resignations and layoffs will be reported every year to the Licensing Board. You know, so that, that will be personally identifiable information, but it's required on a policy, it goes directly to the Licensing Board. The next two, and you'll see this repeated in a few different areas, the drug-free workplace, you'll have both policy and procedure updates related to basically, you know, the cannabis law. So we need to call out that non-intoxin, non-intoxicating cannabinoids and edible cannabinoids products are not allowed to be in use or for folks to have in possession. And then the tobacco-free environment policy will have to be updated. We want to make sure we include information regarding vaping and vaping prevention instruction, as well as including an exception for indigenous adults, where they're allowed to light tobacco as part of a ceremony.
Can I just?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's not in the policy already, or is it just carrying but not lighting?
It's, so that particular one is not necessarily new, but it's not in the policy. So we want to make sure we get that in there.
I thought we did too.
There's, there's later in your 900 series.
Oh.
Got it. So I just, we're going to, we're going to bring consistency.
Can we just go back to the non-intoxicating? What does that mean? What, yeah.
So, right, so, you know, cannabis is a controlled substance, but this new, the, the edibles aren't at a level that always fall under what's a controlled substance. So we want to be clear that anything that kind of has these cannabinoid products in them that might alter, you know.
Yeah, I guess that's why I'm confused, because it says non-intoxicating.
Well, I think intoxicating gets to, right, point eight or whatever.
Okay.
And so they haven't quite totally figured that out.
Okay. So that could be more specific later.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I just wanted to say, put it on record, this is for adult personnel. Our students have never been able to have it, it still will not.
Right.
So I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, so now to our 500 series for students. Our student discipline policy will need some updates. We have to include a complaint procedure for folks who want to express a concern related to the Pupillifer Dismissal Act not being implemented correctly, or our own procedures, or that they're being discriminatoryly applied. So we have to have a procedure for people to be able to have a complaint and then have it resolved. So that will be in the board policy. And also to, and this is to include an exception for indigenous students to carry medicine pouches with loose tobacco for, you know, cultural celebrations or that type of thing. So we'll include that here in the 500 series. So policy, these three will kind of go together, corporal punishment, use of restrictive procedures, and use of peace officers. This gets to those updates on prone restraint and the, the compressive restraints. So in corporal punishment, what will be updated in the policy is that there are limitations on the use of prone restraint and reasonable force. Reasonable force, we will also clarify, includes prone restraint and compressive restraints. So you are still able to use reasonable force, and then we'll update that as well. You use reasonable force when there's imminent harm to a student or another. And it is consistent with how this district already interacts with students. Policy 543, the use of restrictive procedures as behavior interventions for children with disabilities receiving special education services. The update will be to remove most of that and just be use of restrictive procedures as behavior interventions. It will apply to all students and not just students with disabilities. And we will also address compressive restraint update in that as well. Then Policy 532, the use of peace officers, no policy changes, but this is to inform you that there will be that update to the procedure to make sure these provisions related to prone restraint and compressive restrictions or, sorry, restraints, as well as reasonable force are all consistent, because there's some reference in the procedure for that policy. Next. Policy 514, bullying and hazing. This goes to the sadistic and malicious conduct. This is the policy that relates specifically to students, so this is the best place for to place that language in here. And then Policy 515, protection and privacy of education records and data. This references where we will remove mailing addresses of students and parents, and then email addresses of students as limited directory information. It's already limited to, let up here, directory information on those few things is, previously those pieces of information could be requested by community organization, elected or reexaminative or commercial memorabilia company for the purpose of recognizing a student's award or achievement, and the requester would not use the information in any other way or forward the information. But because of legislative updates, those can no longer be directory information. So they will be private and will be removed. Next. 541, chemical use and abuse policy. Both the policy and the procedure will be updated, again, to reference the cannabis law. And then 544, school meals. The changes will reflect that each student will receive free of charge one reimbursable breakfast and one reimbursable lunch every school day. The 600 series related to educational program. 616, the world's best workforce. This is something that the Policy Committee will discuss, is the definitions that were updated by legislation are in effect this year but don't apply. They apply to strategic plans reviewed and updated after June 30, 2024. So the board could wait until next year, even though those definitions are technically in effect, definitions like ethic studies, systemic racism, and such. So those definitions are in play, but the board could wait until next year before updating. Most of the impacts will actually be to procedure. Then Policy 640, class size and student teacher staffing ratio. This is another small change, and it's just a change to the procedure that there will be an annual report regarding class size ratios by grade that goes each year to the 700 series, your non-instructional operations. Super interesting. Actually, the first one's kind of, there is an update to school bus safety training, that it will not just be school bus safety training, but also biking and walking in our academic books, all over that. So we will update the policy to reflect that. And then 707 regarding use of type three vehicles, an update to language clarifying that vehicles 2007 or older may not be used as type three vehicles. And then they include some exceptions of when they could be allowed. So we'll make sure we have that language in the policy. And the next one, because there's no 800, so the 900 series. Again, this is where 921, the use of tobacco, we'll make sure we include the exception for indigenous students to carry medicine pouches with loose leaked tobacco, and then for the chemicals on school property, making sure that language regarding cannabis is consistent there as well. And those will be all the fun updates we will be looking at in more detail at the October Policy Committee, and then the Policy Committee will bring it back to the full board. And then just a reminder of who we're doing this all for.
Any questions or comments on policies? So I, I will, oh, go ahead. I was going to say, I really do appreciate our Policy Committee work, and I've heard of other boards kind of just sweeping them, passing them all like in an instant under consent. And so I do appreciate that we have a rigorous process that, that the full board is seeing what we're going to be working on as a result of legislative changes. I think we have a really good process.
Thank you.
I, so two questions, not, maybe one question. I'm assuming the required changes you'll already have drafted for the Policy Committee.
Yeah, I've got some. I'm ready.
And then the other thing is, it's not a question, it's more of a comment, knowing how much tobacco and cannabidiol has changed into like the vape pens, and how difficult it is to like see or smell, you know, the vape pens. I'm wondering how effective these policies are on a day-to-day basis, and maybe that's something we can only hear from principals and teachers, but.
Varying degrees. You're right, because it's getting harder and harder to detect, because the manufacturers of vape pens and other things are getting smarter and smarter. So, but the schools are really diligent about going through the restrooms all the time, trying to, you know, monitor that as best they can, but it is a challenge.
It feels like they need a full-time staff.
Yeah.
I mean, just for my, my kids.
And they are probably, they are probably some of the vape detectors.
Yeah.
We've got vape detector systems and some.
It's just secondary.
Except they go off.
They go off all the time.
Yes, and it's been.
That's the problem, you do that, you need a full-time staff member to chase the vape detector.
Exactly. And we don't have that.
Well, it's, it's, it just confirms that, yes, it's happening all the time. You know, it's, it's not solving the problem. It's just telling you, yep, they're going off all the time.
Probably, you know, the, the biggest thing that our schools can do is, is looking at behavior, right?
Looking at.
Behavior.
Yes.
Do you, just a consideration might be, is there an education opportunity to engage parents kind of on where we're at, what we're seeing? That might be something to consider this year.
Yeah. We, I'm sorry, Kelly, we do have parent education vaping classes.
Yeah, I know that for sure. Maple Grove Senior High has had some parent organizations, or they've partnered with an organization that held voluntary parent meetings. Have they assisted?
I don't think so.
I don't either. And I know that they have not at Park Center, but something.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, to be continued. So next, we're going to hit the agenda item on instructional material selection. So we wanted just to share some information, some, some of our board members wanting more clarity, so we wanted to just take time. And so today, our presenters will share, I don't know the policy and the procedure, but as well as to look at an example of what it looks like in practice. So this evening, I want to welcome our presenters, the one and only Robin Gonçalves, Director of Learning and Achievement, as well as the one and only Andy Bado, Coordinator of Dinjil Learning and Instructional Media. Welcome, ladies.
Angel. Jill is here too.
Oh, I, oh, gosh.
Just answer and tell them your questions.
Robin, please clarify.
And the one and only Jill.
Assistant Director of Learning and Achievement.
Thank you.
At the time we will be sitting.
It's all good, darling.
Thank you for having us. Explain a little bit and have a conversation on instructional materials.
Okay. So our, our presentation this evening is going to walk our, walk you through the, the policy, the procedure, and, and what it looks like in practice. And so you'll see our outcomes for this, and then understand the selection of curriculum and media materials for a policy, and then to understand the selection of curriculum and media materials, policy, procedures. And then throughout that, Robin and Andy will point out what that looks like in practice. So I think that's, that's really what we're concerned about is when it hits practice. So without further ado, we'll hand it over.
Perfect, thank you. So on this slide, and the following slide, you'll see the purposes for selecting materials as outlined in School Board Procedure, School Board Policy 652. And so when we evaluate resources to purchase, we carefully consider the purposes listed in the policy. And rubrics, rubrics that are aligned to these purposes have been created for teachers in the program improvement team to use as they evaluate resources and listen to vendor On the next slide, you'll see the purposes that are listed, and these are purposes that are specifically required by state statute. They're very similar to what we are, what we have talked about in the past, and we do use this information as we're, as we are looking at resources. The next, we're going to talk about the procedure for 652A, which is the general criteria. And it says instructional materials will have favorable recommendations based on examination by district instructional personnel, or have favorable reviews found in standard review sources and contain accurate information. And then C goes on to say, except in those cases where inaccuracy is needed because the purpose of the material is aimed at teaching critical thinking skills, teaching about propaganda, or developing an awareness of a factual historical context. So in practice, what that looks like is during the program improvement process, we create a team that, what we call the PIP team, it's the Program Improvement Process Team, called PIP team. And this team meets regularly throughout several years usually, to understand current research, look at reviews of curricular resources, and evaluate resources for accuracy. In addition to that, as we pilot materials or review them in the, in the pilot, where the PIP team is looking for quality. where the PIP team is looking for quality, and also evaluates the strengths and weaknesses of all the resources that they go through. Oftentimes, when we enter into the program improvement process, we'd have a long list of resources that we're initially evaluating. So we may have 10 or 13 resources that we start with as we've collected all the information, and then go deeper and deeper as we're starting to look and use the rubrics to identify curricular resources to move forward into some kind of a pilot program that you examine really carefully. Andy's gonna take the next slide.
Yes, so just in the procedure, they actually distinguish between two different types of instructional materials. So Robin has been focusing a lot with her role as the curricular expert, so thinking about core and supplementary curriculum. So that matches a specific course of study that we're offering here in the district, and it's used as the main instructional material for that course of study. So that's one type of instructional material. And then the other type we have is the materials that are in our media collections. So sort of that, the difference there is the materials in our media collections, they have content which is sort of a broad, general appeal, curricular topics that would be found, of course, in, in courses of study, but just broad appeal. They offer fiction and nonfiction resources that students would be able to access. And of course, again, they're available for students and staff to be able to check out.
So when we start working and looking at the instructional resources to use, we have to go through the, the procedure five, or 652A talks about going through the program improvement process, which I'm going to explain in detail in a future slide. One of the things we really wanna make sure is that we're getting multiple perspectives. We bring from, we've selected resources to move forward before adopting them. We talked about them during the, during DPEC meetings, and if some of you were involved in DPEC last year, and we talked about structured literacy and what that looks like and the changes that may be made because of that.
Excuse me, Robin, can you state what DPEC is?
Oh, sure. It's the District Parents, or District, oh, my name is...
Planning.
Planning Advisors. I knew it was a parent, it's the District Planning Advisory Committee. And we have representation, or we seek to get representation from each site across the district. High schools have, can have up to three representatives from each of the high school, and middle schools can be the same. And then from all of the elementarys, we have two representatives. We're seeking to have more student involvement this year. And we've been trying really hard, but it's a big commitment for students. So we're looking out some ways to really create that possibility for students. And then we also have community members, up to six community members, who are not attached to, or don't have students in the system.
Thank you.
So not only do, as a district, can, do we select materials, but buildings also select materials that they feel best meets the needs of their, their students. And these are supplemental materials. And an example of this is at Zane Wood, they have an engineering lab. And in that engineering lab, they use the LEGO lessons to promote STEAM at their system, at their site. And then also another example would be at Park Center Senior High, where they use BYL, which is building assets, reducing risks. It's a curric, a social emotional learning curriculum, and they use that during the advisory with all students. So those are a couple of examples, but it happens really at each of our sites as they're looking at their specific needs as a set. So the program improvement process is really a long process, and I think I alluded, it takes several years. So the graphic on this slide goes through the steps of the program improvement process. And I'm gonna walk through what we have just, are in the process of going through with our elementary literacy program improvement process. And I know you've heard a little bit about the pilot that we did last year and, and how we're moving forward, but I wanted to kind of break it down into each of the steps. So we began the PIP process for ELA, for Elementary ELA in 2020. And we began that by doing that first step, which is defining the process. And that's really looking at, how big is the program improvement process team going to be? When are we gonna meet? Who's gonna be on that team? And what, how, like, doing this open sequence of the activities that are gonna take place in the program improvement process. And so once we had the, the group together, the first assignment of the team was to assess the current situation in our system. And so they looked at what's currently happening as far as literacy instruction in Osseo area schools. They researched what are the best practices for literacy instruction. And they also looked at data, and they looked at both, we consider qualitative and quantitative data. So they looked at the bake level assessment data, but they also looked at information that principals shared as they did walkthroughs to classrooms and observed literacy happening. They, we also talked to teachers about what their experience was, what are some of the strengths and weaknesses of what we're actually doing now, and what we need to do. And then, of course, also during the stages when we really looked deeply at the new standards that had been created, so we were really looking about structured literacy, what does that mean? And really working on, what are we missing in our phonics? Because as we know, we saw holes there. So the next step after that was to review, really analyze the options. So we looked at all of the different curricular areas, or curriculum programs that were out there. We had a team listening to all of the different presentations, and they used a rubric to evaluate each of the presentations and all of the materials as they went through. And as they started listening, they narrowed it down to three programs to move forward, to go way deeper in. And so we had the publishing companies come back and do the presentation again, but half a day presentations instead of an hour and a half. And then we also really spent time digging through the materials. So we had representatives from the Department of Educational Equity, the Department of Student Services, and Learning and Achievement, along with classroom teachers and building principals, take, actually, look at these volumes of material, we go through lesson by lesson for a grade level, and talk about what they saw. From that information, we narrowed it down to two, to move forward. And then we really looked at the financial parameters, like how many people can we have involved in the pilot?
Right.
How can, how many people can we time card? How many resources can we purchase for the pilot? Because it used to be when publishers wanted you to try different materials, they would give them to you. And that's no longer the case. Now you do have to buy it. So that was that step. And then we, we developed the pilot. These, last year, we had 63 staff members involved in the pilot, and we're doing two different resources. And we spent the year really going through and implementing the resources and evaluating them all the way along. And as, when we ended the year, it was decided that neither of those resources would be fit in our system. So we went back to the analyzing options again, and went through the, the next, the following step. And then now we're at the implement, implement, plan, and evaluate results. And we have, this year, we have 45 teachers in the pilot program, and they're going to use both resources instead of half use one and half use two. So they're gonna be using both of those so that they can compare them in a different way. And that will take place, it'll take place, they have a first meeting on Monday night, and it's very successful, super excited, the teachers are all in. And we will be, they will be making a decision, being able to decide if they're going to move forward, if they recommend to move forward with these resources. At the same time that they're deciding that, MDE will be coming out with a list of approved resources. And we're 99 and a half percent sure that both of the resources that we are piloting will be on that list. And we also think that maybe the resources that we invest in will be on that list too. So that would be the place, once we do that, and the resources selected to move forward, then we will talk about, how can we implement this system wide? What does that look like? And also to identify any improvements. So we will be talking to pilot teachers, and they have given feedback all along. We'll be talking to parents who had students that were involved in the pilot, talking to students and administrators of, like, all programs have strengths and weaknesses, and no one program is gonna be perfect. So how can we, how can we make the improvements that we need to make if there are ones identified? And then also how can we implement across the system?
Robin, do you mind? I hope that I'm not distracting you. Can you just really quickly state the new literacy mandate? And what do you mean by MDE having a certain ones we have to pick?
Yes, so as part of the read act and the legislation, school districts are going to, they're, MDE and CARE, who you just saw here, are coming together to create a list. And I believe there's gonna be five, right now it sounds like there's gonna be five resources on that list. And it's gonna be available in January 15th is the deadline they have right now. And from that list, from that accrued list, materials will need to be purchased.
And it's a mandate, correct?
It's a mandate, yes.
Thank you.
If there's a, if there's a curriculum that is not on the list, we can petition to have it on the list, but I don't think that would be a smart plan, since they're definitely waiting for us. So, so that's where we are with that. There's also other parts of it, so what needs to be in the curriculum that we're choosing has to be structured, there has to be structured literacy, it has to be a, it's gonna be, what, one thing we do know that's gonna be different, it's gonna be a change, is the time allotted for literacy instruction has expanded a lot. So we were, we have been doing 90 minutes, and it moved to shorter than two hours. So that's a, that's an increase, and that will be something new for sites to work on, how we schedule literacy instruction.
Thank you, Robin.
Yeah.
Yes, so like I said, Robin's been talking really through that curricular lens, and then I'm gonna start speaking through that media collection lens. So looking at sort of the process and the criteria. So except in unusual circumstances, instructional materials must be recommended. Standard review sources are previewed before purchase. And then prior to that, licensed media specialists will sort of look at the completeness of their collection, where do they have gaps, where do they have topics that have been recommended by staff? What are students asking for? So they'll look at where, where they have their needs and where there might possibly be gaps. Observe the curriculum instructional needs expressed by the instructional staff. So meeting and collaborating to see what standards are, what the curricular resource is, and maybe where they could enrich, provide enrichment for students and things like that. And, or I should say, also consult with the coordinator of instructional media, which is me, before selecting if there's any advice they need relative to purchasing a material. I will say that very rarely am I asked to consult. What I would say is that most of the time, our media specialists are either reading the books that they're selecting or using the standard review sources that are, for our industry to make selection purchases.
Yes, our presentation on the policy and procedure 652, and how we go about selecting resources.
Thank you. What questions or comments do board members or leadership have?
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the acknowledgement of going through the whole process and determining that our curriculum isn't suitable for a district. Instead of just selecting one of them, or the lesser of two evils, going back to the drawing board, I really appreciate that because I do believe that's in the best interest of our students. Despite the fact that it is an added expense, we still wanna do what's best. So I really appreciate you bringing that, because I think that, generally speaking, the, the public doesn't think that we do that. So I really appreciate you sharing that. And I had a couple, one question about what are the standard review sources? Yes, so I could, some of the ones that are used, school library journal, book list, on the Horn Book, Curtis Review, Aldo Shoes Weekly. I guess what I'm wondering is, is it, is it something consistent that, like, every district? It's not just like Google. Correct, yes. So it's not even, even it's, like, I love Amazon, but it's not even going to Amazon and looking at the reviews there. Right, okay. So, yes, it's looking at sort of our standard, industry standard, maybe is a better way to say that, industry standard review sources. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I assume that... No, good question. Don't wanna make assumptions. And I did have a question about the have a favorable recommendation or have favorable reviews. Have a favorable recommendation based on examination by district instructional personnel. Can you clarify what that means? I can. So a good example of that is we've made a, the library media specialists as a whole, as a group, have really wanted to include more diverse books in their collections. And many times, that means some of the smaller publishing companies out there, I can think of Birch Park Books, for example, is one of our local that really focuses on Indigenous authors. They may not be, or have a review in a standard industry review source. So that's where an opportunity for a staff member to read that and see, is that age appropriate? Is that right into our collection? Okay. I was just curious in what circumstances? Yeah, no, good question. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. The page you just showed us, the 652A and 69, where it says, except in unusual circumstances. Can you explain a little more specifically what would constitute an unusual circumstance?
I've actually never had an unusual circumstance, so that's a really good question. I've never gone through that, so I can't even think of an example right now. So really, again, we're looking at either examining or reading the book ourselves, looking at our standard, standard industry review sources, or that final one could be consulting with me, which again, I have really had.
And then my other question, what, what constitutes a school reevaluation review versus a district reevaluation of content? What is the difference? How does that work?
Great. So if, I'm thinking, we talked about that there's those two different types of materials. So there are also the, the curricular resource. So thinking about those resources, they are required, they're used by all students in a subject or a grade level. So Robin was talking about the ELA pilot. A review or a reevaluation of that curricular resource would be a district review, because like I said, again, it's sort of required for all students to be using that material. A building review would be a resource that is not required to be used by students. That could be, for example, it may be a book, or it's being checked out and read independently by a student's choice. That would be a building level reevaluation. I would say too, I think Robin also mentioned that there are resources that are, say, purchased by the building for a specific curricular need, like Zane Wood, their STEAM program, things like that. Because it's not being required to be used by all students in the district. It's only being used for, specifically in this case, Zane Wood students. That would be a material that could be reviewed at the building level.
In the case of classroom libraries, does that fall under core and supplementary or media collection? And are there standards that are required, publication, accessibility? Because our media centers are visible for parents to see, the book lists and so forth. What, how does this apply to classroom libraries?
That's a really good question. Because classroom libraries, the ones that have been purchased by the system, have been purchased using the same process where we looked at reviews, book reviews, and then teachers got together and selected the books that they felt would best match the needs of their students at the grade level. So when we did elementary classroom libraries, we had one representative from each grade level, well, we didn't buy grade level. And so one representative, for example, kindergarten, we had one representative from each kindergarten classroom, each kindergarten across the system. So Rush Creek had a representative, Birchville had a representative through that, and looked through the books that had been recommended by the, by the reviews. And the teachers actually read them, and then chose them and made a pile, and then said, this is a book that I think would really meet the needs of my students, and this is what this book is about. And they read excerpts to the other teachers in the group, and that's where they made their selection.
So if I hear you're right, classroom libraries also have district oversight as to what's going into them?
Just the packet of books that we, we purchased. And so we purchased about 100 books per grade level, or per classroom, as we move forward. But at the other hand, classroom teachers do have the opportunity to bring in books that they find wherever, and they goes into their classroom, it was a part of the classroom members too, that has no oversight.
No oversight. But there must be a policy to apply, right?
It wouldn't apply because they're, they're not for curricular use, and they're not across the grade level. So they, they make the decision to bring in classroom library books to their classroom, thinking about what classroom books would meet the needs of their students.
So how do parents determine whether or not those books are suitable for their own children to read? Because I assume classroom library books are like, kids can just choose them, right?
Right. We don't have a list of the, of the books that, it hasn't ever been policy or procedure for us to have a list of the books that each teacher brings in. Just like when teachers are creating lessons, they can bring in additional materials that they feel best meet who needs to, to help their students understand the content. So we don't have a list, we have, in a way of knowing, that classroom teachers have in their classrooms.
I feel like that's a concern in a number of different areas. I mean, somebody could be bringing in something that's explicitly racist and sharing it with their class, and we would have no oversight over that?
We don't know what they have in the classroom. We don't, classroom teachers have always had that opportunity to bring in classroom books.
In the case of lesson plans or instructional materials... In the case of lesson plans or instructional material though, that's always had to apply to standards. So there's district oversight to if it's, you know, like, it's like, I think in the Equity Contact Survey, there was a stat in there in terms of what percent of material is curriculum and what percent is selected by a teacher, but that still has to meet a standard and we have a procedure around that.
Right.
But that's not the case with the books in the classroom. We don't know, okay?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's a good clarification.
Just for clarification, what are, what are other kinds of things are teachers allowed to bring to the classroom for the educational experience that we don't have like a formal list and an oversight process for?
Yep. So for example, if they are learning about, um, corn, right? There's a, there's some story about corn, I believe it's in second grade. They could bring in a packet of corn and talk about, you know, that this is what we're talking about. This is, these are how, this is how it grows, this is, this is what the seeds look like.
And I would add on to that, current events, things that come up. So there might be a, a media clip or something that a teacher might bring in that's responsive to what's happening currently in our context.
What about content that's like portraying people in a manner that is inconsistent with how those people want to be portrayed?
So we have, so all of our instructional materials have a rubric where we talk about that. And we've also had extensive training with site, with teachers in all area levels about looking for biases and making sure that our, that our curriculum is not biased and portrays all people respectfully.
But that's for our curriculum?
Well, all, all materials that they use. That I mean, students, uh, teachers have gone through as they've been selecting the classroom library books. And we brought them through the different rubrics teams when they're looking at their own classroom library. And that's one thing I did not mention is that we provided different rubrics so that they could evaluate the materials in their own classroom libraries to, to ensure that they were age appropriate and were non-biased and reflected people, all people in a positive way and were accurate.
Just so that I understand you right, they must fill out this rubric for that material or they may?
We, we provided it to them and we didn't require that they did that.
So they could still choose whatever they want? So like if somebody had a very specific ideology about something and they didn't care about the rules, they could bring in whatever content they want and we would have no knowledge or oversight over that?
I think I'm relooking at, because every single time I look at, I've probably looked at this hundreds of times. And I'm looking at the.
It just doesn't seem possible to be the best.
And I'm looking at the procedure for six fifty-two A and building level selection. So I think this might clear it up. Buildings and individual teachers may select supplementary materials for the purposes such as motivating students or extending practice, as long as those materials are consistent with the district's instructional goals and district's scope and sequence for the subject area.
But we still wouldn't know if they did it unless somebody else brought it to our attention, right?
Correct.
We wouldn't know if they said something unless somebody brought.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
But, so then we also don't have a process necessarily for if it is brought forward as a concern? Or do we?
I can see then that it, it's a building level selection, so then it would be a building level process. It's a list.
Under, um, instructional material, is it, in term, understanding that policy, is it, would it be accurate to say that every single item in a classroom is an instructional material? From posters on the wall to library books to lesson plans? I mean, everything inside is an instructional material under the policy, right?
I think, I think it's pretty broad. So yes, anything that a student is engaging with and, uh, learning actively.
Yeah, it's been interesting, um, there's, you know, certainly been a lot of focus on this topic. And I've looked at other district policies and, um, there, sometimes some districts put in place specific standards in the policy of what it must meet versus being outside the policy or in supplementary materials. So it, there are a lot of, there's wide variation in policies across districts in Minnesota. So I think it's, I appreciate the conversation and the policy committee would have to then determine if there's an interest or desire to make revisions to that. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to say that one thing we have to be careful of is that our teachers are professionals and they have the training to pick their, to pick books for their classroom and to teach how they teach. So we need to be very careful about how specific we're going to be. With that, there are teachers across the country that have had to spend tens, twenty hours going through their entire library for books that they deemed appropriate and one person did not. So, um, I just want to make sure that we're not saying to teachers that we don't, um, we don't appreciate your professionalism when we do that.
Um, how much training do media specialists get and about choosing materials? And how many angles does that come from? Completely psychology and literacy and social development, et cetera. Can you like let us know a little bit more about what your training is like and how that qualifies all of our media specialists to make the best decisions possible?
Yeah, so I can just give an example. So I, I have a classroom teaching license in social studies and then I went and received my master's in media. So it's, uh, it's another degree that all of our library media specialists have, have earned. And it, it runs the gamut from selecting literature to, you know, engaging students with literature. And it's a, it's a, it's a great profession. It's always, always something new to learn. So, but yes, it's a wide variety of looking at media and listening.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Great, thank you. We're on our last topic for the evening, so, um, review of school board committees, reassignments, reassess assignments, adjust schedules, the chair, Miss Kewell Jones, and issue assignments.
Yes, so, um, we just wanted to take a opportunity to take a look at the assignments. Uh, I know, uh, at the start of the calendar year, we identified committees to serve on. And since that time, you know, work-life balance can be an issue, the timing of committees can be an issue. So we just wanted to sense check, did, um, did we feel like the, did folks feel like they had a balanced load? Was there a need to shift any committees or, um, request reassignment on any committees at this time?
I would like to request that, um, since the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Committee is one that was just developed a couple of years ago, that instead of having that committee that meets every other month by Zoom and creates a lot of work for our staff, that we have, um, updates at work sessions or board meetings so that we all get that information. It's been kind of hard to share that, um, as people just on the, on the meeting. There are nuances that would be helpful for everyone. So that's kind of where I'm coming from with that one.
I think that would be really helpful for our board meetings to be able to have that public presentation too.
Well, I think it would be good for the community also to hear about, you know, the different curriculum. Heather's on that, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think that it's a really valuable committee. But are you talking about a work session or are you talking about a regular board meeting?
Either.
I feel like a work session might be more ideal because there's so many questions that might come up.
Absolutely.
Um, and we don't need to do, we don't have to take action.
Right.
So I don't know if it necessarily is appropriate for a general board meeting.
We've had, we've had presentations without an action at the board meeting before too.
Yeah, but it's just.
But it, it makes more sense for me also with the work session.
Yeah.
For sure. And then, um, so I, the way I see it is, I think these staff members spend a lot of really hard work doing these. And so let's let them do it in a place where it's recorded for the community if they want to hear it too and a place where we can all sit and ask questions.
How often were we thinking for those reports?
Uh, right now it's every other month. It's pretty short.
Yeah, once a quarter.
Yeah, it, it depends. It would be, I think if we did it, you could do it in bite-sized chunks where you do like a little piece at each work session for like fifteen minutes? Or you could expand it because I, I feel like they're pretty short for the most part.
They're scheduled from four to five thirty. They don't really go that long.
They don't even usually go till five.
Right.
Usually around five.
About an hour.
Heather and I are on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So ha, so how often? I just want, I gotta share your notes.
Yeah, I think it got moved to every other month, I think, at one point, right?
Yeah.
It, it would be a lot if we did it out all work sessions.
Right.
I think so.
But break it, it doesn't have to be like, I don't know, two hour long presentation.
Sure.
So was there a recommendation?
I'm sorry, I can't, I stepped out.
You need to take on this additional board?
So Dr. Bass, we gave you a whole new job.
Whole new job.
On top of your other job.
You don't need a larger card. Larger, uh, card.
Dr. Bass, I propose that we not have the curriculum instruction, um, and assessment committee as a committee. Instead, that work that your staff, everybody puts in, um, for that meeting to bring to the work session instead.
And update.
And update us so that we can ask, we can all ask questions. It seems like it's a lot of work for just two of our board members to hear and the community doesn't get to hear it.
So it sounds like every other one. Try, try not to skip around the room while you're here. Every other month, it sounds like.
Maybe like once a quarter or something.
Once a quarter.
That's what I was thinking.
Once a quarter.
Once a quarter.
Once a try.
Once a try.
At work sessions, yes.
Oh, okay.
And I would just, I, you know, some of our work sessions are already scheduled till nine. So not a lot of good thinking can go on after a certain amount of time.
Well, we can always continue to get more efficient and effective at pre-reading material because, you know, we, we don't have to walk through every bullet point on a slide. We can be prepared and maybe more have a discussion on it versus presentation. Do that too.
Yeah, I liked how Robyn did that. She was like, you can read that slide.
Yeah, like that. I know district, um, planning and advisory committee, I think I'm taking from Jackie, right?
Yes, if you will, that would be great.
Uh, Jackie has already taken ISD two eighty-seven from me. It's reflected on hers, but not on mine.
Oh, yep.
So Heather, you're doing?
Well, I was just doing DPAC and Kayak, but now we're not doing Kayak.
You still got DPAC?
I still got DPAC. Okay.
Um, I often have meetings when the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee meets.
Same. I'm also on that and it's just really hard. When do they make those meetings?
Wednesdays?
Wednesday's at like four thirty.
There's like five of them a year?
I could do Wednesday afternoons.
They're like, um, six to?
They're four thirty. Cause it starts with a. So I think it was.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about the, the drum, the drum and dance piece that they. That's it, that's it, so four thirty, okay.
At least that's what they were last year when I was.
Yeah, but there's, there's five of them, I know that.
Okay.
Like five a year.
I could do that.
Okay.
Is there a requirement for, Brian, is there a requirement for board members to be on that committee?
I, so I would say yes. At least from my experience, it was really important to them that they had board members present. Um, so I was actually going to say that in addition to Director Douglas, there should probably be some sort of a backup, but I know I cannot be that person.
I can be backup. Okay, Tanya, backup? Thank you, because it was, I felt bad last year.
Same.
Brian, will you give me that schedule?
And Jackie's back.
Ton, oh, not me.
I mean, Ton.
Did you look at my list?
Yeah, exactly.
So are we okay with intermittent two eighty-seven?
We have to do that. Those are both requirements. Northwestern and two eighty-seven are both requirements.
And those people can still stay?
That's me, yep.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I'm good with those.
Jackie is those people.
There were Jackie is those people.
I'm those people. Those meetings are later.
Your two eighty-seven is both?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, it has, still is very unbalanced though, Jackie. You still have a lot of stuff. What's the board requirement for the RISE committee?
I would say it'd be the same as what Director Brooks said about APAC. They want to see board members there.
To have, to have one and then have a backup?
Sure.
I thought we had a provision in that committee that there was a requirement to have a board member.
So I, I'm on RISE committee and it was always, at least my understanding, that Jackie was a backup.
Okay.
Um, I almost always attend those meetings. Um, I try not to miss them, so.
Okay.
I don't think that one's a very concerned.
Jackie has to be at all the time.
Correct.
So we should write backup on Jackie?
Yeah, I think originally it said two people, but I think it's fine that it's one with a backup.
Yeah.
Okay, you're the back.
And they're okay with that. I'll just write backup on mine. Do DPAC and ECMAC still overlap?
If they're Monday nights, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do. Do you have ECMAC? Are there any other movements that board members would like us to look at?
I know ECMAC has been a challenge for me over the last year, but I don't necessarily want to put that on anyone else's plate and will do my best to make it as much as possible.
Is that a one person or are you people on that?
Two, I think, yeah, Sarah's on it as well.
Do we need two, John?
I don't know if we need two. I mean, it could be backup and, I think it's really just for reporting backup to the board if there's at least one.
You want backup Thomas or you need to be off that altogether?
I would say it's up to the board. They want to make sure that two are there at all times.
Are we, okay, with, if you can make it, make it? And if you can't, we know we have Sarah's one person?
And I can circle back with you.
Tamara, are you still on the AMSD?
Yes.
Okay.
Shouldn't be a big deal.
And ECMAC keeps pretty detailed notes too and posts them, so there's a lot of information.
And, and may I ask if it's okay, like what is a legislative action committee? What do we, what is that?
I haven't really met yet.
Oh. Do we need it?
It was a new committee that was formed.
Yeah, last year.
To do.
Come up with our legislative agenda.
Oh, our platform thing.
Yeah.
So previously it was just done as we put a, sent a survey out to the board and cabinet and to get ideas and bring that forward, but it was the request of a former board member that that be turned into a full committee. If there were, outside of that board member, there was one additional member that we got last year. So it's, it is not well attended.
So it's not necessary and can be eliminated?
Yeah, and I would leave that to the board to make that call, but it's today, I, I think, I think the information we've gathered and having Valerie's input too and obviously we have the benefit of another legislative expert in the room. I feel like we meet our needs.
I would say I'd be in favor of eliminating it. I think when we create committees, we should be clear and thoughtful and that should be a board decision and that wasn't the case, so I was never in favor of it.
I'm in favor of it, but maybe it's something we can just kind of put a pin in for the process right now because we've got a lot of other commitments going on. I'm definitely not in favor of eliminating it, but maybe we can work through a more simplified process this year. Sure.
Yeah, I was going to say just take it off the list for now, but we could, always can be in a task force or something.
Yeah.
We reevaluate every six months, so.
True.
Maybe bring it back for real.
We reevaluate every six months, so maybe bring it back for real, reevaluation at that time.
True.
Tamara, do you think you would be able to take over student board rep liaison? I don't think so. I'm pretty tacked right now. You only have AMSD.
Yes. And policy committee and so on, so I'm saying no.
Oh, that's not, oh, never mind. It is listed.
When does that one meet?
It's really not a regular meeting. It's just like meeting with the kids before the board meetings and talking to them.
I'm here at, I'm here at 4:30 every board meeting. I can do that.
Yeah. Just like making sure they're comfortable and...
I can do that.
You know, prepared for questions, but Amy does a lot of that already.
Yeah.
It's really just like rapport type stuff.
You mind if I read this out just to make sure I'm understanding this when I give it to Sheri?
Mm-hmm.
Or you can, I'm sorry.
Okay. So, Thomas, I have you moving to backup on ECMAC, otherwise no other changes?
Correct.
Heather?
I think, I'm sorry, I think we can move AMSD off as well.
Okay. Heather, removing 287?
Yep.
And removing student board rep liaison?
Yep. And Kayak? Adding APAC.
Adding APAC. Removing Kayak. Tamara, removing APAC?
Yes.
That's the only change. Sarah, no changes?
Yeah, I feel like I just got started on those.
Yeah. Jackie, do you want to read all your changes? You took as many on as you could.
I, no, I didn't. I backup on RISE. And I got Northwest Suburban 287 and student board rep.
And takeoff Kayak.
Takeoff Kayak.
Takeoff.
Takeoff about legislation action.
And DPAC moves to me.
And DPAC moves to you.
What about student board?
I'm student. Yep, add that. And I'm just adding, I'm removing Legislative Action Committee and adding DPAC. I think we got them. That feels better.
A little bit more balanced.
Well, and I was just mentioning this to someone else. I know one of, one of the times I said it's really hard for us to get to school events because we're doing so many other meetings. So this will give us a chance to be able to go to school events more often. Got it? Good.
Okay. Are we ready?
I just want to say that it's 8:10.
All right. With that, this work session is adjourned at 8:10 p.m.
Thank you.
We need to turn the recorder on.
Okay, got it.